Is that in our background material?
Yeah, look on the workshop session, it's just a single page.
It's all right. I just knew we needed to get out here. It wasn't you this time.
Forgot my colored hair, anyway.
Did you?
Yeah, you got it. I was gonna bring those rainbow colored hairs.
It is seven o'clock, we do have a forum, a call city council meeting in order. First item on the agenda is the invocation given by Councilman Guerina and then the proclamation of both the, I mean, excuse me, the pledge allegiance given to both the American and Texas flags led by Councilman Ferguson.
Would you bow with me, please? Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight to ask you for your wisdom and guidance, Lord. We also ask that you protect those that protect us and work for the city, whether it be our fire and police or our military that's local and abroad. Lord, we also ask you that you bless this city and the state and America. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the American and Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one nation under God, one indivisible.
Thank you.
I could ask Matt Newton and Kenny Wade to please come forward with me and join me up here. And that would be? And that would be?
Deb Anderson.
Deb Anderson, is that right?
Yes.
Nice to meet you, I'm Dean Euclid, pleasure to meet you. Hi Kenny, good to see you.
Hi.
We got a proclamation tonight that's very dear to everyone's heart, not just us here in this room, but all the way around the world. Because we all have come from our parents, grandparents, the people before them. So, I'd like to tell you a little bit about what this proclamation is about by reading it to you, and then I'll let one of you speak, or all three of you if you'd like to, and explain a little bit about why you're here tonight. Because when you hear the proclamation, I'll think you understand how important this is that we never forget from where we came. Whereas the city of Louisville in Denton County is home to more than 6,200 citizens aged 65 and over, 6.5 percent of our total population. Whereas older Texans are valuable members of our society who enhance our communities and personal lives. And whereas one out of three older Texans will fall this year. And whereas falls among older adults account for 40 percent of all nursing home admissions. And whereas falls cost our state $1.8 billion annually. And whereas the emotional, psychological, and catastrophic costs that affect families and caregivers is immeasurable. Now therefore, I, Dean Euclid, Mayor of the city of Louisville, along with the members of the city council do hereby proclaim the month of September 2012 as Fall Prevention Awareness Month. And we urge everyone to take time during September of 2012 to learn about the factors that contribute to falls and strategies that can lessen the chance that they will experience a fall. Our efforts can improve the lives of our older citizens and help pave the way for safer future generations proclaim this 20th day of August 2012.
Thank you, Dean. The United States Congress has picked one day for fall prevention, and that's the first day in September that the day of autumn comes on. The state of Texas, they have a fall prevention coalition which Matt and I are part of, and Texas has gone where they have a whole week. You can be proud of Louisville because Louisville is celebrating the whole month. And we have activities all month long for seniors, and we started with three cities uniting. Then last year we had six cities, and this year we have eight cities with quite a few more wanting to join us. And so we celebrate all month long Fall Prevention Month, and just mainly trying to educate the public on what they can do to prevent falls and to encourage activity and to attend the classes that Matt and I do as volunteers. We both are certified coaches for a matter of balance, and we do this through senior centers or churches and other facilities. But thank you, and I have calendars for all month long, I can drop them off.
I'll make sure I see the picture. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, consideration of an ordinance for a zone change request from light industrial to Old Town mixed use two point one five acres located at 527 East Main Street, further identified as Keely Edition Lot 9 Block 19 as requested by Jose Juarez, the property owner. The area is currently a mix of predominantly light industrial and Old Town mixed use two zone parcels along Main Street. The property is located across the street from the Main Street Village subdivision. The Old Town master plan calls for Old Town mixed U2 zoning throughout this general area. The applicant is planning to renovate and improve the existing structure in a historical fashion. Their proposed use will be a catering service and potentially a fast food restaurant and retail food products for sale. The Planning Zoning Commission recommended approval of the zoning request by a vote of 6-0 at their August 7, 2012 meeting. Recommendation that City Council approve the proposed ordinance for zone change requests as set forth in the caption above. Do have a card filled out here by Jesse Juarez, who is not really wanting to speak, but he is here in support of this and is here to answer any questions if anyone has any. Does council have any questions of Mr. Juarez? Entertained a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. Have a motion to close public hearing by Councilman Ferguson, a second by Councilman Vaughn, I believe it was?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? 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 Motion carries. There we go. Okay. Councilman Ferguson?
Move to approve this request as stated.
We have a motion to approve as recommended by Councilman Ferguson.
Second.
A second by Councilman Gilmore, counselor?
I jumped the gun on that one.
That's all right.
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas, that amends the zoning ordinance of the city of Louisville, Texas, granting zoning changes on the 0.15 acre tract of land fully and completely described in the attached Exhibit A, ordering a change in the use of said property from light industrial district zoning to Old Town mixed use two district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability, determining that the public interests and general welfare demand a zoning change and amendments therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item is a visitor assistance forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Do have one card filled out by Helen Byron, and she would like to speak on mosquito spraying, I believe. So, Ms. Byron, if you'd please come forward and give your name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
Good evening.
Can someone get Helen's microphone?
I'm sorry, would you just swing that around? I'll just put it to you. There you go.
Okay.
Thank you, so, I should've done that earlier, and I apologize.
Okay. Yes, well, good evening, my name is Helen Byron, and I'm a resident of Louisville for 42 years. And I'm here with a concern about the mosquito spraying, or rather, the non-mosquito spraying that is presently going on in Louisville. And this year does not seem to be a regular year for the mosquitoes and the West Nile virus. I have spoken with Ms. Harper over at the Express Pest Control, who seems to, to which the city has transferred the need to conduct the spraying or non-spraying activities through them. And I have gone to the website and see that they are taking some actions about the controls as far as the lavas are concerned, but not with the spraying. They've done one spraying, which was almost a month ago, July 21. And I think that under this year's circumstances, there might be warranted to have more. Other communities have seen that there is a need for the spraying this year, more than ever. And I'm not, you know, trying to enforce myself, but I am concerned, especially for the senior citizens, as you've just mentioned, there's over 6,000 senior citizens in Louisville. These are not the people that are necessarily going to be spraying themselves, or, you know, perhaps they'll take care of the water buckets or whatever that they may have on their properties, but they're not going to spray themselves with bug controls. But they will be up to be out walking at dawn, they will work in their gardens at dawn to avoid the heat. And I think it's somewhat irresponsible to the point where we need to do more, we need to be a little more aggressive this year. And I would like to know, or I'd like to ask the council to consider intervening with the Express Pest Control people and see if they can sort of get them to be a little more aggressive and enforce the spraying a little more and a little more often. It has spread. There are people that are getting sick with this. There's only one death reported, but I know there is concern about the environment and other bugs as far as the spraying is concerned. But we have to put people first. And that is, that's basically what I'm asking tonight, is that something more be done at this point. Thank you.
Sure. And what I'm gonna do is ask the city manager to just kind of give everybody an update because I know when people see this aired on TV, I do want to let you know that we have not, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have not had any citizens in Louisville die from this. They've had one person in Denton County that passed away from it, but none in Louisville, thank God. But that's not to say we couldn't tomorrow, so don't get me wrong, we're not taking this lightly. I can tell you, he probably gets tired of me calling, I mean, asking him every day, because I ask him, what are we doing today? Where are we? But I'll kind of let him address it to you and tell you, just kind of give you a little bit of information, we're not going to take any action on this, but just kind of information purposes, what we are doing and how we are going to be doing more spraying. But it's not just us, everybody's out there trying to do it at the same time, there's only so many people to do this spraying. And so we're trying to get it in here, and as far as the aerial spraying, that has to be adopted by the county and the state, and like Dallas County did that. So, but I'll let our city manager kind of explain this to you and let you know where we're going from here.
Well, I'm not asking for aerial spraying.
I wouldn't mind it myself, but we have to wait until the county decides that first.
You know, the city has sprayed, on the ground sprayed before. I've lived here that long, and I've seen that the trucks go around.
Right, and we're doing some now, and we're continuing to do more, and that's why I'm gonna let him address to you and go over with you.
We do have the contractor scheduled for spraying this Wednesday, Thursday, Friday nights. I believe, weather permitting, in several areas of the city, we'll be posting those areas on the website later this week, and they're still being defined as we speak, but generally they're going to be in the north and northwestern parts of the city where we've had the biggest concentration of cases and positive mosquito vector results. So that'll be a three-night, three separate area spraying. The contractor is, as you might expect, extremely busy, there's only a couple of them out there that are licensed to do this, and they're just going literally from one city to another every night of the week. And so you have to schedule well in advance in order to get them to even show up in a city. So, we've got that scheduled, but having said that, no amount of truck spraying is a substitute for self-protection. I don't know that I would advise any senior citizen to go out in their garden in the morning without completely coating their exposed body with DEET or with clothing, because there's just no way for that truck spraying to reach all the locations where mosquitoes live. And plus, the problem is that they're constantly breeding and putting out new generations. So I can spray tomorrow, and by Friday they'll be back from new generations that have hatched. So, we have been pushing hard, the four D's, which are basically a way of protecting oneself, and if you protect yourself, that's going to be the best protection for you. We'll do the truck spraying in an attempt to bring the populations down until the cold weather kicks in, but again, we can only do that so often.
Well, I appreciate that, you know, I didn't even know about that. I went on and got the website printed out this afternoon, and there's no, that was updated on August 17th, so.
Yeah, because we haven't identified the areas, we haven't got the full definition of the area, but it'll be on the website later this week.
Because it is spreading to the northeast side now, which is where I live. But basically, though, what I'm appreciative of the fact that you have signed up to do this, and that was my only concern, that there was really nothing being done about the adult mosquitoes, okay? It's fine to take care of the eggs and what have you, but nothing was being done about the adults, and it's the adults that are biting, you know? So, thank you very much for that information, I appreciate it.
And I understand, my mother's in her 80s, and she doesn't mind me saying it, she's in her 80s, lives with several people that's in their 80s and 90s, so I understand, we make sure we work with everyone in the city. We have been spraying, and we will continue to spray as much as we possibly can.
I have a neighbor, and he is also in his 80s, and he loves to work outside, and he goes out very early in the morning, and, you know, he will not, he will wear a hat, but he will not basically take all of these precautions, you know, they just, I don't know, they just don't believe in them, or they don't think it's going to happen to them, or they weren't brought up to be that way. But I do appreciate that, knowing that there will be something happening soon, and I hope it will continue.
Starting this week. Thank you. Next item is the consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen or for a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. I did not have any cards filled out, but we did have Councilman Guerina ask us to pull item two. So, Mr. Guerina, would you entertain a motion on the consent agenda?
Sir, we can add an item two, but I just wanted to talk about item two for a moment there, I wanted to...
But to do that, you have to pull it.
Okay, we'll do it. Move to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item number two.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Guerina to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item number two, and a second by Councilman Durham. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, Councilman Guerina, you want to go to item number two? Acceptance of a $5,000 donation of the life and fire safety program from the Ringling Brothers Circus, and approval of a supplemental appropriation to the fire and police training fund in the amount of $5,000. The city has received a $5,000 donation for the LAFS program from Field Entertainment on behalf of Ringling Brothers Circus. Recommendation that the city council accepted donation and approved the supplemental appropriation as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Guerina?
A reason I wanted to pull this out is I just wanted the citizens to know what a great job the clowns, they're the ones that, Ashes, Petunia, and Radio, they're the fire and safety, life and safety clowns. They're doing such a great job, and they do it as volunteers. And they're out there all the time, they're always giving and showing up at everything, and I wish they were here tonight, but it's just amazing how much time they spend and all the great work they're doing teaching kids at all the schools. And I just wanted to give them a little bit of kudos, and I didn't want it to be just in a consent agenda without them getting a mention, but if no one, a great job, chief, on...
And again, to thank the Ringling Brothers Circus for the donation.
Yeah, the Ringling Brothers Circus went above and beyond, and the safety clowns also do things with them, I believe, also. Is that correct, chief? Anyway, I just wanted to give a word out for them, and if no one has, if anybody has any other comments?
I just did what you said about our clowns, they do such a wonderful program, not only working with the city, but with our schools, they go to, every year, they go to every single elementary school and do about a 30-minute program with all age groups in elementary schools to get them not only educated on fire and safety prevention, but also to encourage them to spread the word to their families when they go home about it and make it a fun project. So we do commend them, they do a wonderful job all year long.
With that, I move to approve item number two.
Second. We have a motion to approve by Councilman Guerina, a second by Councilman Ferguson, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item three is a regular hearing, consideration of an ordinance amending the Louisville City Code, Chapter 8, Section 8-3, by amending the definition of business district and the prohibition of the use of skateboards, roller skates, roller blades, scooters, and similar devices to include city-owned courtyards, concession areas, pavilions, restroom areas, and coverage structures, and within the property line of city-owned buildings. The current ordinance prohibits the use of skateboards and similar devices in certain areas and locations within the city. The proposed ordinance change provides language to include the MCL Grand within the business district definition of the ordinance and expands the definition of city-owned property to which the use of skateboards and similar devices are prohibited. Recommendation that the council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption of Councilman Gilmore?
Move to approve as written.
Have a motion by Councilman Gilmore to approve as written.
Second.
A second by Councilman Ferguson. Counsel?
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas, amending Chapter 8, Section 8-3, Subsection D of the Louisville City Code by amending the definition of business district, amending the prohibition on the use of skateboards, roller skates, roller blades, scooters, and similar devices to include city-owned courtyards, concession areas, pavilions, restroom areas, coverage structures, and within the property line of city-owned buildings, providing a penalty clause, providing for severability, providing a repealer, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We're down to reports. Nika? Do we have anything here tonight? Nothing at all? Nothing at all? Okay. Chief? Linda? No? Chief?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a couple of things, really. Just want to let you and the citizens know that the deadline for application for the Citizens Police Academy has been extended to the end of the month. And for those not aware, that's a 13-week program, they come in one night a week and they get a chance to hear what we do and see what we do at the police department, and in return, we get to hear and see from citizens. So that's a good program. Again, that's extended to the end of the month, 972-219-3668 for more information. And then also, next Monday, school is back in session, so we were trying to remind residents, investors, and citizens to be mindful of the school zones, watch those yellow lights before you see red and blue lights.
That's on the Monday, the 27th, correct, chief?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Harold? Linda? Lee, are you doing a good job there tonight? We, you look a lot better than Eric does when you sit up, or you know, have him that, too, would you?
Hillary looks a lot better than Bob does.
Yeah, that's true, too. A lot better there. Mr. Backus? Councilman Durham?
Just, Councilman McRean brought it up last week, but our last meeting. School starts Monday in Louisville, and it will be starting at other times in other areas around here, so everybody just be on the lookout. I've noticed kids with their parents already checking out the route to school and all that in the mornings, so, thought they was planning a little bit early, but that's okay. And then the rodeo starts on the 31st?
Through the 2nd of September.
And through that Sunday?
And we don't, we're not here on Sunday.
Oh, yeah. And our first meeting in September will be on the 10th? Is that correct? Okay.
Labor Day's Monday, 30th.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Guerina?
Saturday, the 8th of September is the, I believe, the sixth annual doggie dive-in, is that right? The sixth one? Well, anyway, if you have pets here in Louisville, please bring the registered papers with them and have a little fun at our pool, at the Sun Valley Pool that's on, it's on Valley, just south of Louisville High School. And I'm not sure what time's that start, what's the time's that start? 9:30 in the morning? It's a lot of fun, a lot of dogs have a lot of fun, just make sure that you bring your dog's shot records with you so that they can get checked in, and I don't know if there's any other specials, there's usually vendors and things out there to, little goodies for you to take home for your puppy, and I don't think cats like all that water too much, and I don't think the main attraction, which of the dogs would like the cats to be in there, so, let's kind of keep the lead of the cats at home.
They might like the water. Has it been tried?
It has been tried. No, but anyway, it's kind of a fun thing, and it's, we do this, I guess, before we do the major cleaning out of the pool and everything, is that right? Yeah. All right, so.
Hopefully.
Hopefully. Yeah, they will clean it, yeah. Anyway, it's a lot of fun. Saturday, the 8th of September.
Councilman Gilmore?
I'm gonna dovetail, because the Saddle Club and the arena are kind of near and dear to my heart. If you haven't been out to the rodeo grounds, the place is looking awesome. We have completely new seating, new access, ADA compliance all over the place, so there's no reason why you shouldn't come out and enjoy the rodeo. So it will be at 8 o'clock on the 31st, First and Second. Tickets are eight bucks unless you've got kids under 12, and that's $6. It is a great time, folks, make sure you get out there.
You can buy them at the door, right?
Absolutely, you can buy them at the door.
No more cost-effective entertainment in the town.
No, it's a phenomenal, phenomenal event.
Mr. Keane?
Nope.
Councilman Ferguson?
I've got a few things, actually, first of all, to add to something Chief Kerbo said about school zones, keep in mind your cell phone use also, because that's going to be something you're going to have to get, you know, used to again, is that cell phones are a no-no during the school zone. The, spoke with the rodeo club this past week, and they are going to be painting out there, so if you wondered, is that ever going to happen? They were waiting to do some ADA modifications to ticket window height and I think one other part of the buildings out there before they started painting, and they didn't want to start the painting while they were kicking up the dirt. So, they will be painting, it's going to look real nice, and of course, if you haven't driven by, you ought to take a look, because it's quite, quite a renovation, I'm very pleased to say. And then MCL Grand, Visual Arts League has an exhibit called "A Land Far Away," which are paintings by Dennis Ferris, spelled F-A-R-R-I-S, so no relation to anyone around here that I know of. They also have a photography exhibit in the hallway, and their usual Friday acoustic jam every Friday night at 7:00 PM, which is free in the gallery. There are a ton of meetings going on, I'm not going to name them all, but we've got meetings, retreats, breakfasts, dinners, you know, training programs, luncheons, presentations, I mean, got a lot of stuff going on in the Grand, and we just recently talked about getting good use out of the Grand, so it's going to be a busy place in the next few weeks, and that's always good. Definitely get our money's worth out of that facility. And then finally, there will be, I think it's maybe the last Louisville Summer Musical, Rocky Mountain High, is that the last one, I thought it was, which is a tribute to John Denver, and that's August 24th at 7:30, and August 25th at 2:30 and 7:30, so you might want to check that out. And that's all I have.
Councilman Vaughn?
Yes, Mayor, I have a couple of things I'd like to remind everybody of. And one of them is that, starting today, DCTA has started midday rail service during the week, and they've also expanded their Friday and Saturday hours. And the other item is the senior center. It's having its annual garage sale on August 25th from 8 to 12. They're going to be... There are going to be approximately fifty vendors selling goods on, on the site, as well as, everyone may or may not know, the senior center accepts donated items so that they can defray the cost of some of their trips and things of that nature. Thank you, Mayor.
Clarence, certainly good to have you joining us tonight, and I do appreciate you earlier reminding me, because most of the time, Liz will have to jump in and stop me from taking the votes, so I appreciate it.
I was ready for it.
I appreciate it. She probably forewarned you, didn't she? Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
One job to do.
Julie?
No.
Would you maybe go over our, do you have our public hearings for the budget there?
Not in front of me. The date of the budget, the date of the public hearing?
Correct.
Okay.
That's what I'm talking about.
Our next public hearing on the budget's going to be August twenty-seventh, which is next Monday. I believe that meeting was set for six PM for all of you. And then I think the follow-up, then the following one would be September the tenth. Correct?
Right. And just for those, what we referred to there is we did have our workshop, budget workshop session this past Saturday, or, excuse me, week ago this past Saturday, and we did a tentatively look at approving a budget, which will be done during these public hearing meetings. Okay. With that, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section five five one point zero seven two, property acquisition, Section five five one point zero eight seven, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, we're now convened into closed session.
You're right. You're right. You're right.
We'll convene back into regular session. Counsel, I have a question to put to you. We have scheduled, as we mentioned earlier, in the session, we have scheduled next Monday night, the twenty-seventh, a special call meeting, a public hearing meeting for the budget. We could also, if you would like, put on the agenda to do personnel evaluations, or we could do it the following meeting, the tenth, which would be your pleasure.
Mayor, I'll be unable to attend next week, so.
Twenty-seventh's good for me.
No? Okay, you've got one. I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead. Anybody else?
I prefer the tenth. That way, we'll all be there on the tenth, right?
Everybody, you'll be there the tenth?
Yes, since we'll all be there on the tenth, that's what I'll recommend.
Is that okay, everybody? The tenth?
I may not be here.
I'm good with either.
Okay, I'll give direction to staff to be sure and put that on the agenda for the tenth. Okay? Any other action to be taken, counsel?
Move to close the, to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Ferguson.
I'm looking at my calendar, not thinking.
Have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Ferguson.
Second.
A second by Councilman Durham. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.[1766.33]